Welcome, everyone, to our June meeting. I guess maybe I'll start off by thanking the electorate for approving our budget. You know, I think we passed with 70 percent.
Seventy-two point four.
So seventy, not to be too exact, seventy-two point four percent of the vote, which certainly shows a resounding support from the community, which we've been very fortunate as an organization to have that kind of support on a very consistent basis, at least since I've been on the board. So, you know, we're delighted with the outcome. It will enable us to continue to serve our community well going into the future. And next month, we will have the new trustees, or one new trustee, one re-elected trustee sworn in. And I might take this moment to thank our outgoing trustee, Corey Galloway, for his service and contributions to the board. And we look forward to, hopefully, you staying involved with the library in whatever ways you see fit.
You know, we have always companies like CROCK.
There's always ways to get involved.
Yes.
So, moving on through the agenda. First item is approval of the minutes. I'll just give a minute for folks. There's two minutes, two sets of minutes. One for the budget hearing and then one for the main meeting. And Tom sent them around. I'll just give a minute for folks to take a look.
Just one change for the public hearing.
Yep.
Just the name.
Ain't a just Michael president. It's probably from last year's.
Oh, oh.
Or a year before. Any other comments on the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Can I get a second? Yes, did you get the amendment? Oh, okay.
I figured you were doing two separate.
Sorry. I wasn't, but thank you for your faith in me. So I make a motion to approve the minutes of the public budget hearing as amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular May meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Next item of business. Do we have any financial highlights we want to mention?
Just that the end of the fiscal year is close upon us. And Ms. Manning has been spending a lot of time crunching the numbers. At this point, it looks very positive that we'll end up in the black. We're not entirely certain yet. We're still waiting for the dust to settle. But the scenario looks very positive, very rosy.
And we'll get touch more on that in a minute, in a few minutes when we go to the Finance Committee report. WLS report?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apart from a few housekeeping matters mainly of a financial nature, the board last, at last meeting concentrated mainly on following up on the migration of the green. That took quite, quite a bit of time. The Chair of the Public Library Directors Association gave us a fairly comprehensive report essentially saying that this exercise is going well. This has gone very well. And many libraries are quite happy with that. And that they are giving a lot of support to the libraries in terms of training and advice and almost regular interaction with them in order to assist them in implementing this program. Based on my own experience and the kind of work I was in, when something is overpriced, I'm always a little... And I spoke out and I said, "Well, apart from all these good things I hear, there have been some reports about nagging issues that libraries are experiencing." I was, of course, promptly assured that that was not the case. So I would like to have the director confirm this. Because I have a gut feeling that all is not well in the Kingdom of Denmark.
Shakespeare. Very good, sir. Right, sir. Indeed, you're right. Something is rotten in Denmark. It's the system that we have. The migration actually was fairly painless. But the product that we currently are utilizing and our patrons are utilizing has actually a number of critical flaws. And the process is one in which where we, as the county directors, are starting to begin dialogues amongst ourselves and also with WLS about addressing these issues. And actually, there was a meeting this past Monday, a group of about a dozen library directors, including myself, to talk about these issues. And indeed, there are many issues. And we are taking, we as the librarians are taking action. And I expect to report more information about the sorts of things that we are doing to fix a system that really has some flaws that is very problematic, whether it be our ability to get into the system, the very extensive delays, whether through the computer system or actually the software being bumped out of the system, holds being very problematic, the inability to print a spine label. There's a lot of things that are happening. And we, as the directors, are taking a variety of steps. I'm not really at liberty to talk now, but certainly, I believe, at the July meeting, I can share more.
Very good.
Anything else?
No, no, that would be it.
Thank you. President's report. Board, so are we doing the nominations tonight? Does the nominating, who chaired the nominating?
That was you, Whitney, and Dan.
Yes.
Should we do that once the new...
Should we do it in July?
July.
Yeah, let's do it in July.
July.
Yeah. Once the new board is in place.
Yep. So we'll elect, we'll do that at the beginning of the next meeting after the inauguration.
Great.
I sounded after the oath. Okay. I don't have a report otherwise. Tom, I'll turn it over.
Just many of the things you've heard before. We're still waiting on our New York State Library Construction Grant for the renovation of the second floor here in the main library. Hundred and forty thousand dollars. We have not formally received approval. We expect it's forthcoming. It's usually announced through our state legislators who have carried the ball and allowed us to have this money, both our library and all the other libraries in the Westchester library system. We expect, once that announcement is made, we'll see the actual grant amount arrive either in August or September. And again, hundred and forty thousand dollars for the main library for the second floor renovation. We expect to see a much smaller amount, eighty-six hundred dollars for our Huguenot Children's Library to replace the antiquated boiler. So that all is coming. We're excited about that. We're planning, particularly for the second floor, to continue our commitment to sort of to repurpose and make more functional and attractive our interior spaces. Happy to announce that we have been in touch with the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York for the grant that was sponsored by Senator Stuart Cousins, which is a hundred thousand dollars. It's an EDAP grant, an economic development grant. And Jean Manning has been working with our contact at DASNY for this. We've answered all the questions that she had and we're hoping to hear in the near future. I don't have a timetable for a decision nor the arrival of the funds, but we're hoping it's in the near future. So that's good. The Rotary Club of New Rochelle, I'm a member, has made a commitment to donate a thousand dollars to our library for our anticipated program that will be starting in the summer, Friday nights for teens. We want to open the library, particularly the theater in the meeting room and lobby for teens, New Rochelle teens. We're working with Youth Bureau to make that happen. We actually have a meeting next week with Kelly Johnson. We think it's really important to have the space that's laying fallow and make it available to our teens so they have something productive and positive. We expect to have, you know, programs here in the theater. Might be at least initially an open mic night where, you know, could be spoken word, it could be music, could be other opportunities. Perhaps we'll have food and some other things. And we'll see how it plays. And we're hoping to vary the fare and give other opportunities for our teens. And Kelly Johnson and the city are coming to the table, helping us manage it and also have money to use towards this effort. So that's a thousand dollars we look forward to.
And that comes out of last year, a couple of years now, two years, two years later, after we had a really unfortunate incident and kind of the city was trying to come together. So that came...
Came out of that meeting, that the directors of a variety of city departments were asked to come together, police, the Board of Education, myself, the Youth Bureau, nonprofits like the Boys and Girls Club. And Kelly and I had a conversation in which he articulated a desire to have programs on a Friday night. And I said, you know, we're here, we're in a center space. We have this great theater, we have a meeting room. And so from that point in time, we've been slowly but surely working towards that. Now, we just need to make some, confirm some commitments from the Youth Bureau in terms of security in the building. We'll be providing security. But we'd also like New Rochelle Police to be on hand. And Kelly assures me because they have a program that's very successful, a mentoring program, where some of our local police officers who are working with teens will be available that evening for these programs.
Is it New Bros? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mentors in blue? So it's, we're really, we think this is the next step for our building to be used, you know, in the off-hours when the library is, you know, not formally functioning.
Is that open to other cities?
At this point, Corey, I think we're trying to try to keep it focused on New Rochelle kids. And we're, we have a cap of fifty to sixty teens. We expect to do a preregistration and, you know, so we know who's coming and, you know, they'll have a sense of what the program will be, what the resources will be.
I actually don't, so unless like nobody shows up, I actually would like to keep it to New Rochelle kids just so we get to know our kids as much as we can. And then maybe we'll expand it.
I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't need to open it up, but it's...
A good, sure.
I'm mentoring some kids tomorrow for Youngers, something Brother's Keeper.
Okay.
I'd love to just mention this. That's something Youngers can do in Youngers, for sure.
But like, but you never want to say no to them, right?
Of course not.
But I, yeah.
No, and I know the director there and he's a forth-thinking fellow. And his wife is actually in charge of WLS's sort of social service justice entity. But no, we'd like to, we'd like to keep it tight and really very specific so that we sort of have a control on it. And, you know, as time goes on, we can perhaps open it up, you know, more, more teens, maybe from different communities. But I think at this point, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew. You know, we want it to be successful and something that will be appealing to teens throughout the summer Friday nights. It's not going to be every Friday night because we already have commitments to use the theater from other organizations. But we're expecting it could be as many as six over the course.
That's great. That's great.
And then from there, once the summer concludes, we can, as we will continue to analyze and see how things are going. And maybe we can extend it in to the school year. So that's that.
I'd just like to confirm what Thomas said yesterday as President of the Board of Directors of the Rotary Club. We did approve the one thousand dollars yesterday for the library.
Wonderful.
Lot of pleasure.
And I'm hoping, Francis, that some Rotarians might consider volunteering.
Yes, we will make that appeal.
If we, if we use some of that money for snacks and food and things, that we could be on site to be, you know, sort of part of the process.
That's right.
I don't want to volunteer because I don't know your schedule. But Francis is always, he's at every, every event.
Now you're forcing me to volunteer.
I know. It's subtle, but you're subtler than I am. So you picked up on that.
Okay, I'll be there.
Anyway, so it's really exciting. And we'll continue to keep everybody posted as we go forward. Chuck already said, so are, in such an articulate fashion, our election has come and gone. Thank you to the community for voting in overwhelming numbers to support the library, its budget request and the programs and services that it provides the community. It's really very heartening and inspiring. And we will continue to go forward and give you the best library possible so that the community deserves it and we're all committed to it. The staff and the board and, you know, everyone involved, our volunteer groups, too. Our foundation and Friends work tremendously hard for the library. And I think on a day like May 21st, it shows. And I want to congratulate the trustees who have been elected to office and also thank Corey for his great service.
Appreciate that.
One item on the agenda that I know, I know you folks have looked at it and maybe we can't vote on it until July, is the calendar for 2019-20.
I think we can vote on it.
Can we do that?
Yeah. I mean, follow the same methodology.
It is. It's no change.
With the modification of the last two, or the last May, the extra May on there, there's May 7th, June 11th, and then May 19th.
Yeah, is that? Oh, okay, that's a typo there, right? No, no.
No May.
No May 19th.
No second May going backwards in time.
No, 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 no.
Is that July, though, or no? We don't do it over the summer.
We don't, no, we meet from July to June of the fiscal year.
Sometimes we cancel the August.
Right. But we haven't lately because of the New York State grant. It's usually a very short meeting in which, yeah, we're, it's very short in which we ask the board to approve our grant applications for both of those, for both buildings.
Okay.
I mean, somebody will make a motion.
I make a motion to accept the board's schedule for 2019-20.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sure.
They haven't been because, because we just voted.
Just now.
They'll be, I'll ask our web person who is here in the audience, hi Nikki, to load them tomorrow. Well, I'll make sure that they are available. The first meeting is July 11th and it will be 7:30 here in this, in this space. August 8th.
So it wasn't amended again, I missed that.
There was an extra May at the bottom.
May 7th and then May 19th.
You can cross off the May 19th.
Oh, okay, all right.
The next, the next item for board action is the annual report that we are obligated by law to submit to the State of New York. And this annual report records service activity as well as financial information and information relating to, you know, the board members, terms of office, policies, et cetera. It's a pro forma thing. Every year in June, we ask the board to approve this document. It's already been submitted, worked on very hard by Jean Manning. It takes a lot of time and effort to pull together all those pieces. And if you folks would like to look at it, and I can make copies available. It's just sort of our service indicators.
I'm going to read it word for word to the audience. Just kidding. We'd be here for the next three days.
But it'd be fascinating reading it.
Could be fascinating. I'll make a motion to approve the report as submitted.
I second.
All in favor? I've looked, I've read it in prior years. It's sort of perfunctory statistics and information on board numbers.
It was a template.
It's a form.
It is a form. It's a template.
Yeah. I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, thank you all. And thank you, Jean, for working on it.
Or no?
It's a labor of love, I know. No, sometimes. All right, the Friends, and it's interesting. Amy Teetz, our Friends president, works really hard for this library. She's here three to four days a week, no pay. Called me with an interesting, what she characterized as a fun fact. From 2009, she was looking back at her documents. The Friends, through the sale of books, ten cents, twenty-five cents a dollar, maybe two, has donated to the library well over half a million dollars. It's really amazing, you know. And to my knowledge, our Friends group is the most successful in the county and certainly actually one of the hardest working because all of that money is created not by big checks but by sales to the community. And those books are going back to the community. It's a green effort and it also allows people to have their own libraries. Books are expensive and families can afford...
Have they got any, like, has it, just that figuring throughout, which is so impressive, like, I wonder, I know we have a dearth of like local press and media, but I wonder if it's worth trying to, maybe through community relations, reach out to a couple of, I don't know if we know what reporters, local reporters cover us with, you know, that, like the fact that they gave us five hundred thousand dollars by selling books for like fifty cents a dollar.
Twenty-five cents.
You know, over, I mean, it's pretty, that might, I'm just thinking it might...
That's a great story.
...be a reporter and writing a little story and, you know, some positive press.
To pitch it.
Yeah, but I would think Barbara probably could be helpful in pitching it.
I could talk to Barbara. Barbara's a big fan of the Friends, of course, too. But, yeah, I, it's impressive. I mean, it's on so many levels. It's really impressive.
I think the five hundred thousand dollars is sort of a eye catcher and then, you know, maybe profiling a couple of volunteers or something.
Our volunteer who just celebrated her 100th birthday.
Actually, that's a good...
Yeah.
Truly, comes in two to three days a week, really.
Yeah.
About an announcement on our local radio.
Yeah.
You know, a friend, what was his name?
Yeah, Amy has been on Hannah's show. And whenever we appear, we always try to make a pitch for the Friends and the Foundation because, honestly, I don't know where we'd be without, without those organizations. They have tidied us over in some very tough times. And now that things are looking better, they're still providing, I mean, SCAD's money to allow us to continue to improve the building and provide ongoing programs and services and innovative programs, too, as well. So that's a good idea. So the Friends book sale is slated for July 11th and 12th. The Friends board meeting is slated for July 17th. So please, if you have some spare time, take a look.
Did somebody sign up for the July 17th meeting?
I think somebody signed up for it.
Yeah.
We have the doodle. You have the doodle, right?
Doodle, yeah.
The Google, the doodle.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have the doodle. Are you, are the doodle? Maybe.
On the September, August.
I just went to the May. Oh, no, that's the Foundation. I haven't been to a Friends.
It's closed.
What's that?
I said it's closed.
July 17th.
They're usually at one o'clock, sitting at the tables directly in front of the Community Relations Office.
Got it. That was last night.
They're usually pretty good, good meetings. In the, your documentation, you'll see the most recent Friends financial report. And they're in really good shape, you know. Despite all the money they give us this year, they've promised to give us, I think, upwards of sixty-five thousand dollars. And sometimes they give us, you know, when we go to them for little extras, like I just went and asked the Friends for the money to allow us to purchase new toys and manipulables and other things for our Huguenot Children's Library as well as our main library. She said, Amy said yes. So it's, some, I've heard in the library, in library land, some Friends organizations hold tight to their money and decide what they will and won't donate towards or give towards. Our Friends group is always open-handed and always listens to us. And it's great. It's a really terrific partnership, honestly. Going, getting back to another great advocacy group that we're lucky enough to have in this city, it's our foundation. And the annual meeting is slated for this Tuesday at 6:30 at Posto. And so if there are trustees that are attending, it's always a great evening, a fun evening. And it's a way to socialize and thank people.
Six thirty. Six thirty on Tuesday, the 18th.
Fifty dollars, yeah.
Are you going, Whitney?
I was on my calendar, but I have another thing, so I have to...
Are you going?
I can go.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Francis?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
Anyway, one of the major elements of their annual meeting is a vote on our grant for the fiscal year that's about to begin in July. And you have in your basket, and I think I sent it to you as well, the, what we call a wish list, which this year is higher than normal. It's for a grand total of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. And it's more than usual because the Friends Gala was a tremendous success. They earned a lot of money through... Yep. So I'm going to ask you to take a look at it. If you have any questions about what we're requesting, I'm happy to answer them. I will tell you that this document is put together in concert with our library department heads. And most of the departments and areas in the library have an opportunity to fix, augment, or enhance their area or their service or their collection.
And has this been socialized with, like Chris or the family? So they've already...
They've seen it.
All right.
And Chris likes, likes what we're trying to do. She's supportive. But what we obviously want to do is we need your, the board's support before we go forward.
Yep.
So this always strikes me as, I'm always wondering how we can make this a larger, like, my, my... I'm always wondering how we can, you know, how we can make this, it always seems like it's like one thing here, one thing here, as opposed to part of a larger vision for the library. And so I'm always wondering how we can start this process earlier and think of these things in a larger vision. I suppose we want this, we want that. Unless they're all telling, like, are they all telling a story about how the library is growing, how...
They do. And I think it's, I understand your point. And you sort of hate to throw little bits of money at little, little things. I think if you look at this request, the first one is the second floor renovation project, which is a pretty big deal. It's seventy-eight thousand dollars. That is our match to allow us to gain access to a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the state for something that's long overdue, which is, with the near completion of the first floor and its renovation, it looks attractive and functional, we're moving up and we're continuing to do the process. So I think that's a big picture project.
Bless you.
And the, and the other areas relate to other, some are ongoing, like the Museum Pass program, which has been tremendously successful. There's, there's that. For example, the Lumen Winter Gallery light replacement effort. We are working with the lighting system. I understand that was, that was installed in the early eighties. So we need to, we need to improve that system. From what our curator Barbara tells me, there are some artists that don't want to exhibit there because the lighting's inadequate. It's not, it doesn't highlight their art properly and that the areas where people circulate, it's dark. But a lot of what we're doing is building towards a bigger project. And there are certainly other projects that aren't part of this that the Foundation is supporting. For example, the courtyard project is one in which, if they receive the funding that they are hoping, it will, it will change our courtyard...
Entirely.
Entirely. And that's obviously a good thing.
Yeah. Okay. But yes, I don't like doing like...
I think you're talking more not about the outcome because I think you like what's here. I think it's more about the process. And it's about the fact that it's July, what's today, July 13th? And, oh, sorry, June 13th with seventeen days left in the fiscal year and we're just kind of reviewing it, so...
Maybe if we could like back it up by a month.
Yeah.
So this was discussed at the Foundation meeting in, in May, I believe. So if they're, you know, they're talking about it and I know, it just might be nice for the board to see it before you even take it to the Foundation they're talking about it, and I know, it just might be nice for the board to see it before you even take it to the Foundation, in case there are other things that are part of the larger, big picture that you're talking about, that, that may be. And obviously, I, I think that we all respect the library heads and, and the process.
But you need to look at it.
I think so.
To be perfectly honest with you, the list was fairly short up until the gala. I mean, it was only the first two items, the second-floor renovation and our ongoing support of the Museum Pass program. But because of the extraordinary success of the gala, where quite a lot of money was earned, and I was told that we would have access to additional monies, you know, I always have, we have things ready to go. But you're right, I should have shared that sooner.
Well, it's not, I don't want to sound like I'm, I'm not even really criticizing.
No, no, I don't feel that it's, I don't feel that way. I, I, I think one thing that the Foundation wants, and I want, is to make sure that the board is very comfortable with, with the initiatives that we're proposing, that it's not the library staff that's proposing X, Y, and Z. It's, it's a process that involves appropriate, suitable input from the board, so I, I feel fine with that.
Should we make a motion?
Sure. Sure, did everybody have a chance to read it? Yeah, okay. I make a motion that we accept the proposal for use of Foundation monies for their grants for fiscal year 2019, 2020, as described in this handout that Tom gave to us.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Three.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I, my report is done.
Proceed.
Personnel report. Very, very brief, just, I need action on the resignation of one of our part-time, hourly employees, asking for a motion to accept the resignation of librarian one, Philip Pajoli. His resignation date is May 19th, and his salary upon his departure was twenty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents per hour.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
I, I, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm done, thanks.
Thank you. There's the first item, Budget Committee, I'll, I'll have the Budget Committee have a report.
Fast.
Fast, yes, that's the report.
Very good report.
The best. Building and grounds committee.
Yes, so the Buildings and Grounds Committee met with CROCK in the last couple of weeks, and, like we mentioned at the last meeting, we had three RFPs for the building audit. I think that we've selected one, but we're going to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks, just to finalize some of the details, to make sure that everything's included, what we want done, looked at in the building, and then we'll have a better idea of what the final price will be. So we expect to meet in the next few weeks, hopefully before the next meeting. And I think the other update is the elevator, that the elevator is working.
Hey!
I wrote it last week.
You did, you got it in?
Had to tell the tale.
Yeah. So I don't know if you want to elaborate on the elevator?
The elevator is working, that's about the sums at all, and it's, was a long process, and, you know, I, the, it feels great, but it, actually, I'm not happy about the delays and the fact that our community was impacted. You know, it's very frustrating. And we have been in touch with our, our attorney to talk about next steps, if there are next steps, and that's for the board to discuss at a, at a different moment in time, but it's great, it's.
Do you want, you mentioned kind of the preliminary recommendation from the attorney?
Yep, so, once I returned from vacation, I did reach out to our attorney, as well as our consultant, who, our consultant in particular really helped us get to where we needed to be, about what our, what our legal next steps might be. And we had a conference call early this week to talk about the situation. And basically, his recommendation was that, A, the elevator is working, and he congratulated us on being able to achieve that at no cost to us relative to the, to the vendor. But he set a, a threshold number that would spark the possibility of legal action, is if the library incurred expenses that reached twenty-five thousand dollars or more, and we certainly did have expenses, but not anywhere near that amount. It was his recommendation that, knowing that, that his, his fees would not be insignificant if we move forward. And he, he thought that, all things being equal, he felt that we should not move forward with a lawsuit. I did talk about the pain and suffering of the community, which was real, but it's hard to quantify that. It's hard, it's not anything that we have tangibly, we, we just know that many people were unfortunately inconvenienced, and it's, was frustrating, but he.
I can refer my mother-in-law.
Oh. Well, you can tell me, and then I'll, you know, that, that would be sufficient.
Well, it was, you know, the library, I remember I was trying to donate some books to the Friends of the Library, and for a while, they couldn't take any books in, because the elevator wasn't working, so, I'm not saying we should do it, but there was, you know, there was pain.
Quite, quite a lot, but it's hard to.
Quantify.
Quantify it, and so that's what, that's what our attorney indicated.
Maybe would I, thank you for that preliminary read, and maybe, I guess, it probably fits most neatly into losing rounds. Maybe Sarah, you guys can just consider it, you know, next meeting, you know, come back with any.
Obviously, all is well that ends well, but is there any guarantee period that you expect to have no problem at all?
We do have a, a warranty period that's fairly short, but what we're actually planning to do is to review our contract with the vendor and consider options in terms of creating a new contract and possibly rebid the contract out. And we also will continue to work with our consultant, so that, independent of whomever is the service maintenance provider for this elevator, we'll have another party who will be watching the elevator. And of course, one of the issues that was problematic that became worse over the course of time, the, the element of, of water has now been fully addressed. So it's, it's dry in that elevator pit, which is a good thing.
Wonderful. Anything else from building grounds? Thank you. Community relations, I know Daniel's not in, so does anybody have anything they want to report?
I, I just would report, I don't have the report in front of me, Daniel's been usually doing that, but I want to point out that our summer reading game is about to begin, and so all of you here, or in, you know, in internet world, if you have children, please consider becoming part of this effort. It's been successful and fun for many years. You get to continue to read over the course of the summer. Thanks to the generosity of the Friends, we have all sorts of prizes for threshold accomplishments. And we're moving forward with our generalized sort of summer programming for the theme. Every year, the library world has a, has a theme, and our theme this year is exploring the seven seas, and we have some great programming opportunities that are coming up. Barbara Davis has been working with an entity, and we will be having a huge inflatable boat that will be part of this, and we'll have programs that will relate to the ocean and the seas and the environmental elements as well. So it's, it looks like it'll be a fun summer for all ages, so I think the kickoff is this, the 22nd. It's, right, Nikki's saying yes, yeah, and Jessica, you're working that day, too, it's the 22nd. And it starts in the morning? Eleven to one, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Needs assessment committee, do we have a?
I don't think we have anything. I mean, we need to have stuff, we just haven't done anything.
That's okay.
That's our report.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll, we have to get another person on our committee, so, once we do that, we'll bring whoever that is up to speed and get moving.
Personnel committee, I don't think we have committee recommendations.
No.
I guess what I would maybe suggest is, and maybe you can pass this along to Beth as well, people have, you know, preferences around committee participation. Maybe Tom, you could collect those, yeah, just send to Tom if he's got preferences.
Usually, you do them. She's been doing them for, like, years. Yeah, yeah. So she has, she had, no, I didn't mean to volunteer, it's just you've been doing them. Like, she has a whole system.
Perfect. Okay.
I don't even know how you started doing them, but all of a sudden.
People give you, she's like, who's on what?
Yeah.
That sounds good. Policy committee, I know there's a report, the policy committee's been very busy.
Guys did a lot.
Very official.
Yeah.
This is a whole.
Can I skip over the finance committee? The finance committee wants to go after the policy committee, because it's, we have a related matter.
Oh, good, okay. So the policy committee has been very busy. Three mamas that were working hard over coffee, and it was, Starbucks dates and our, our. I know, fantabulous Jean Manning, who helped us really unpack some of the financial issues. I saw Jean the next day, and we both looked at each other and were like, that, after the fact, it was fun, maybe not leading up to it, but to understand it. So we were asked to think about four different policies. I think we'll start from the easiest, all right, we'll do it this way. So one question that came up was what would be, we did not have an articulated vacancy policy, so we did some research. I think I alluded two meetings ago, that the city council has a policy that essentially allows for an appointment of an interim person until the next annual election. Turns out, our neighboring library boards who have articulated policies have a very similar policy, and the one that we're borrowing from, I believe, if I remember correctly, is Mamaroneck, who articulates that whenever a vacancy on the Board of Trustees shall occur for any reason, the vacancy shall be filled at the next duly-scheduled election. The Board of Trustees may appoint an interim trustee to serve until the next annual election, at which time the remainder of the term shall be filled by candidate duly-elected at such election. Approval of an interim trustee shall be made by a vote of two-thirds of the members of the Board of Trustees, providing that notice of the proposed appointment has been sent by, to each library trustee, at least five days prior to the meeting of the Board of Trustees, at which time the vote will take place. Since that seems to be pretty consistent, both in neighboring and city council, that's our first recommendation to vote on. Tom has asked us to give a suggestion, to recommend a policy with respect to the elimination of overdue fines for children and young adult materials. We did some research to, again, look at what our neighboring libraries do. California has a huge movement around this, north to south, including Oakland, which, a week ago, actually voted in a new policy that'll take effect in their new fiscal year, July 1. But we had some questions, specifically, a lot of the policies say they waive the fines, but if, but if someone accrues twenty-five dollars or more of lost materials, then their privileges are suspended anyway. So it sort of seemed, it's not really a waiver of fines if your privileges are ultimately suspended, and in some way, they're assessing the fee despite saying that they're waiving the fine.
Can you say that again? So if I owe twenty-five dollars or more, my privileges are.
Are suspended until you, go ahead, Tom, you would be the expert in this, yeah.
That's exactly that. If a patron has borrowed material and has not returned the material, the material is considered lost. And there are two aspects to the, the fine structure. One is the actual fines that were accrued.
Yeah.
You know, in lieu of not returning the material on time. And the other aspect element relates to the replacement cost of the material in question. And what, what, what libraries have been doing, both locally, regionally, and nationally, have been, for children and young adults in particular, have been suspending fines for young people. Matter of fact, Yonkers has been doing this for at least five years, I think. And other, White Plains has instituted, and there are a few other libraries that have instituted it as well. I think what was being proposed was that the fines would be eliminated, period, for children, for, and for teens. The loss of material is, is in fact a different matter.
And so we, we, as we were sort of looking at the policies, both in California and in Westchester, we just felt like there was a disconnect in terms of, like, announcing this benevolent policy, but then ultimately, the, the, the fines get converted to a lost material, and then the, the library card is still suspended, so you're not meeting the goals. I felt like we found ourselves asking, like, what is the goal of the elimination of the fines? And it's to make sure that everyone always has access to the library. On balance, though, then we were thinking, how much money would the library lose by losing the, so it became like, are, so, so one thought we thought would be a good intro, test kind of pilot, was to waive fines for children's materials checked out for this summer, partly because we know that, actually, the last, that document that you just showed is, six hundred and seven children signed up for the summer reading program last year. We know that there's a spike in our children using the library in the summer, and so waiving it there. And then, another thought that came up, and this was actually, Sarah made, made this point, about what about adults? Like, why are we not considering adults in this, in this process, too? Which made us then think about, what's the quality, like, again, what's the goal of it? If it's to protect our most vulnerable, like, financially vulnerable, then what are we doing? So the thought was, could we introduce a grace period of seven days past the due date for adults to see? And I don't know how that would work with the computer.
Actually, given the fact that we're in this brave new world of the evergreen system, I'm not sure how it would work either. I can certainly, now that I, now that I see it, I can certainly investigate and, and find out if it's viable.
And so, sort of parallel to this, this, to this sort of recommendation, we met with Jean, who told us last year, for example, we gained twenty-six thousand dollars from overdue fines. Three thousand of that comes from Huguenot. The balance, the twenty-three, we actually can't distinguish which is children or which is adult material. But now we probably would be able to do like a comparable, based on the month-to-month of fines received, by suspending it in the summer. So then, if we decide to make it a permanent policy, we actually like data to answer the questions of how much money do we lose? How do we, can we address the grace period and things like that? But we think, at least for children, we should suspend fines for this summer. And then if Tom can look into a way to allow for the grace period, then we can sort of report back. Go ahead, yes, please.
Make two comments, so I, I, in the town I grew up in, we did have a grace period, and, and during that time, you get a notice, you know, your library books are due, and you're like, oh, and, you know, sometimes it's the first chance you have to return it is past your, you know, you've forgotten it, and, and it was great. I mean, it was really helpful, and it makes you go back to the library, and.
It just, it's curious, because I, I haven't heard of a grace period person, but what I do know, certain systems, if patrons elect to accept this communication, that there can be emails sent to, let's say, to Whitney, saying, Whitney, you have four books that are due in, in, in a, in a, in a week.
Exactly.
Please, just, just gentle reminder.
Right, so, so you could either have a, have a grace period, or, or maybe don't have a grace period, but have reminders that come to you, so that, you know, either way, you're eliminating fees, it's just getting the books back, maybe before they have a chance to get lost. And then the other, there was some other thing that I think you had mentioned, Yadira, or maybe it was Sarah, I don't remember. One of you in the Starbucks was talking about a, a very sweet and thoughtful way for children to, like, work off their fines.
It was a policy in California where if you had a fine, if you read, you earned money to pay back outstanding dues, or the lost fee, for the lost fee, so it was of, the fines were waived, but if, when it was converted to lost, they could read and collect money, or you could even bank money by reading, and then if you ever were, lose, lost a book, you'd already have like a credit.
It's a lot of management.
It's a lot of management, it is, but you know, it was, what was great, was we were reading about what other libraries were doing, and how are they engaging the kids in the community, so it's just part of the dialogue. And, and again, California seems to really have a robust process around the fines, I mean, the Santa Monica, LA, and Oakland particularly, each had really interesting, like, innovative sort of things around the children's fines, but keeping engagement and being really mindful and thoughtful around making sure all of the community have access. So it was, I think it was, it was just, you know, it's like, now we all go on vacation, I, I check out libraries more now than I ever did, right? So it's just part, I think it just comes with the territory, sort of doing this. Sexual harassment policy is pretty.
Wait, so just one, the twenty-six thousand dollars. So, we're not going to get the twenty-six thousand dollars.
No, we don't know, we, we don't know, so.
Get the three thousand dollars.
So three thousand comes from Huguenot specifically. Of the twenty-three thousand that comes from this grant, it's not clear which is children and which is adult.
And the three thousand is over twelve months, so we're only talking about.
Right.
Part, partial years. You know, I just, it's gonna, it's fine.
Yeah.
It's just gonna affect our budget, so we should be thoughtful about that, as well.
And I think, Sarah, I think the overall.
And, and I think, Sarah, I think the overall goal of, of these fines, et cetera, is, is to educate patrons to be responsible when they borrow uh, books, this and that, not only for themselves, but also for the others. I think if that kind of education, it is, that could be, could be enforced, so even youngsters, young kids could understand that, that we are not penalizing anybody, we're just trying to uh, educate them that, you know, books are valuable, uh, it's not only for themselves, but for everybody else, and that should be, that, education accompanied.
Your point of view is the traditional point of view, that the libraries have embraced for quite a while. But I think, my experience, my reality is that oftentimes children have, have cards that they are locked out of the library. They can use the library, but they can't borrow anything. And very often, it's not their fault.
Right.
It's their guardian, their parent, um, someone else.
They can't jump in the car.
Right, right, right.
I, I hope not.
Or keep a calendar at age eight, maybe, but you know.
But you're, you're right, Frances, we all want people, our children and ourselves, to be responsible and mature and respectful. But sometimes these children are placed in positions where they don't have any say in any of this. I mean, it's, it's a thorny, thorny question. I, 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 I agree.
What?
But I like the idea of experimenting and seeing how it works. I think that's really thoughtful.
And when a, when a library card um, applicant fills out their information, what information is collected? A name? Is it, is it email, phone number?
Oh, if, yes.
An address. So there are ways that, you know, if it's through a, a computer generated text message to remind you that your library books are due or an email.
But you remind the parents still.
Totally, right. I mean, a child's not gonna, I mean, many six-year-olds don't have cell phones yet.
Not yet.
Or email addresses, right, right.
Or email addresses where they can check regularly.
Well, what it comes down to is, again, this are, is the integrated online system that, that we have, you know, does it provide that?
Does it have that capacity?
Right, I know it had the capacity to tell you, you're, you have material that's late, either via phone or through um, email. Whether or not it, our, this system has it, I'm not entirely certain. If I can find out.
I mean, I think, yeah, I think part of it, and I think some of it came up, was just how do we leverage technology to do the remind? Like, right now I get a notice when I'm overdue, I currently have a book that's lost. Um, my kids, see, um, stop paying that. Um, but, um, but how do we think about, like, does it give a warning a couple days morning? And those are things that I don't currently remember getting in my inbox. And so how do we sort of leverage capacity?
The CERSE system that we had, there was no warning. I think the, the warning system is, I think it's effective.
But I think on balance, we appreciate that the budget is tight, and so we don't want to necessarily lose an automatic source of income. So I think this summer just lets us do a little bit more deep diving and see what the impact is with respect to revenue. How do we go about educating, to Frances's point, um, and how do we, and how, and how do we um, you, Miss Oliver is raising her hand and seeing she gets warnings, great.
Do you get a warning? You, that it's, you do too. Through the old system or the new system?
You have one now? You owe something now?
So maybe, so on the new evergreen system, oh, okay. I'm, thank you for educating me. I didn't know.
So the, bottom line, the proposal for that is to encourage suspension of fines for children's materials for the summer of 2019. And then I guess to the extent, the grace period would require a little bit more digging in and then like reporting back. The sexual harassment policy, that's probably the shortest one. We, we were in agreement with the document you shared. Um, we just wanted, when applicable, a lot of the documents has like a name or title, we really felt it was important to have specific names and titles as opposed to generic names like supervisor, and just encourage that the document be circulated, updated on an annual basis. The theory being that specific names would be something more people would be um, aware of and not necessarily someone's specific formal title.
So, so you think it should be uh, the director, Tom Chafino, or so?
Yeah, unit head.
Right, got it, okay.
Just. It, it does require maintenance, it does require maintenance, but I think if you're in the space where you want to sort, need to discuss something that's hyper sensitive, you don't, you wanna like cut the bureaucracy, cut the like, wait, what is your title? At, you know, I don't always know the formal title, but I know the name of my boss.
Right, do you maintain like an org, like, I'm just trying to think if there would be a way for people to easily figure out like.
She's telling you the one.
Just in the document.
It's not on her if it's, yeah.
And I feel like the heads of the departments, I don't really hear that they're stepping down and dro, like, the turnover isn't so high, so I feel like it's, it'll be, it's another step, I, I do, but.
It's viable.
Right.
And it should be updated annually. I mean, I think that's something, it should be, there should be something that people have signed it and read it, and there should be something that's updated annually and circulated.
I think we should make it as easy as possible, just one document that has everything. For people, if they have a need, to be able to find where they go. So that's why I just think what you guys.
And, and I think it should be noted that um, all organizations are supposed to be adopting this policy. This is a policy that was um, given to all these organizations through the state of New York. Um, we were obligated to have sexual harassment training. We actually had it on that Wednesday when we were closed to construction, so we used that day successfully. We still have a few people to um, to undergo the, the workshop and so.
Okay.
We just did a tune at work?
Did you?
Yeah, 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 it's all over the place.
So the fund balance, the fund balance, sounds like fun, but it's not fun. So I, Chuck went to a training and then came back with like, so what's our policy? Kind of, I feel like was sort of the directive, just to have it more articulated with respect to the fund balance. Um, and based on some sort of comparables that Tom received for us from, again, neighboring libraries, and then a directive from our attorney a couple of year, about a year ago, maybe 18 months ago. Um, we, we dug in a little bit, and this was where we were um, grateful to have the opportunity to sit with Jean and look at some numbers. Um, so in your folder, there's a document that says cash flow on top, lots of numbers.
And what was your charge on this one?
So to determine the policy for the fund balance, like, how are we determining how much we set aside? Are we just sort of?
Isn't that though, isn't there a standard?
So there is not, you have options, you can choose different options. So to, to start, maybe I'll start from there. So based on the PowerPoint presentation that Chuck went to, there are three options. You set aside a percentage, you set aside an amount based on a, a, a time period, like monthly, three months, six months, or you set aside a flat number. So those are sort of the three options that came out of the training. And so we wanted to look at the number in our fund balance and like, what does that, what does that relate to? It looks like this.
Cash flow right now here.
Uh huh. So the attorney said that it, um, 12 to 16% seem to be best practices for an institution like ours. And that seemed to fall in line with what some of the neighboring, a good number of the neighboring libraries um, were doing as a matter of practice. So currently, we have $922,882 in the fund balance, which represents 16.43% of the last year budget. Remember, we're finishing up this year's budget. That's in the second page, that's in the third page of the memo. Um, the numbers, so flip it over, there you go. And so the question we had was, what does, what, what does 922 cover, and just in terms of months? We just wanted to understand it in the different metrics. We didn't really like the thought of a flat number, we wanted to correspond with actual expenses. So the document that Jean pulled for us, the cash flow, looks at the average monthly expenses from 2014 through 2019. So you can look the average monthly expenses for July, August, or just monthly average, and that number's 449,557. That's that very last number in the top. So we were comfortable that the 922 reflected about two months' worth of expenses, it falls within the 12 to 16% range. So it seems like, it, it's just over 16%, right, by .43. But it felt like we were in a good space, based on best practices and sort of our obligations as an institution. Um, so we didn't have a recommendation to change the practice, but.
So two months is like, how do we come up with that?
So based on the monthly average, so this is the.
No, I know, but you're saying, so we have two months, so, so we're saying that's good?
So, so typically, so, so the, the idea is that we want to either have, we want to know that what's in the fund balance represents a range. Um, and typically for a nonprofit organization, it could be something like, um, for example, the nonprofit that I worked for previously, they recommend to be conservative between three and six months of operating expenses, monthly operating expenses, so that if something happens, you can still function for that amount of time.
I mean, two months isn't a lot then.
It's not, and so, no, but, but, but if you're looking at, um, if you're looking at three to six months, and that obviously is much, much higher than 16%. And so I think we felt like it's more than two months, not, not three months, more than two months, that it, um, it's a nice, it's a healthy fund balance.
It's, it sounds good, but it's just not, two months is not really gonna do much for us.
No, and it's not, but, and so therefore, we're not.
Go ahead.
To conclusion.
But it's, but it, but it's not, we're not outliers with that, with that allocation. We're, we're not, and I mean, and the, the comparables were Chappaqua, Yonkers, I mean, like, it was a broad range of comparables within the region. Um, and so we certainly aren't outliers. It was just more like, so what does that mean? What does that look like? You know, it was just like, that's a great number, it's 12 to 16%. What does that look like? And so that's why we sat with Jean, just to get a better sense of like overall year to year. Um, and then the recommendation was that we've actually never, and never is actually a very strong word, um, within the time period that we've been on the board, um, had a thought around keeping an eye towards it. So the recommendation was just to see if our monthly disclosure documents that Jean so diligently provides could include the actual percentage, just so it's a quick way to check if it's within the 12 to 16, because the number 922, again, we were like, what is, what is that? We don't know what that means. Yes ma'am, oh, okay. Okay.
Because it fluctuates dramatically.
Right, based on the. Mm-hmm.
I couldn't see that I have to go into fund balance, stake fund balance. Then it happens sort of at the end of the year, when you're talking about, am I going to, have I got to open the expanded service or not? Or have, have I gotten all the revenue that I expected?
Right.
So I don't know that.
Yeah.
Basically the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. So I mean, I do think the space that, so the, the balance of the recommendation is to keep an eye, if it goes over 16%, then we're sort of obligated to discuss if there's a one-time charge, there's different areas that we're allowed to sort of use, as you brought back to a few months ago, um, if you exceed the, the prescribed fund balance amount. And of course, if it falls under, then like finance and budget need to meet, to sort of have that conversation. I do think in general, we felt like we'd like to have a better sense of it throughout and not wait till the, we happened to meet towards the end of the year, so Jean was able to do this, because you were almost done anyway, the monthly sort of cash flow.
What about like quarterly?
Okay.
Because in case, I, I know you're, I know you're not gonna know about additions to the fund balance, but if we did something with it that obviously the board have approved, it would change.
So maybe quarterly is the proposal, does that feel right, to you and Sarah? So quarterly, just sort of check-ins, and that way you have a quick eye, just to see if we're on track.
And if something has happened over, you know, during the year and you needed to, you, you know, then you can alert us to it and just.
Right.
So far.
Right. Right. And so I think, um, so when we met with Jean, Jean said, what did you want to spend the money on? And the answer was, we had no mind towards spending the money on anything, we just, the, the whole goal is just awareness, is just to understand what we have and to, to, to answer Chuck's question about, you know, how, how should we um, pay attention? And I think um, we don't, we're not really writing a policy other than to, to increase our awareness of the fund balance.
So that's, that's us, Sarah.
So do anything?
No, you covered it all.
Okay. I mean, so, I, I guess we have to vote, which, right, okay. So, I mean, the proposal for the first, so the, the, the policy committee recommends that we adopt the vacancy policy as articulated in this doc, I don't, I don't want to reread it, should I re, I read it once, okay. As articulated in this document, so I guess somebody has to move? Oh, I'll move, there you go, Yadira's moving.
Uh, I'll second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Oh.
Hi.
Oh, I really moved, okay. Um, elimination of overdue fines, the policy committee recommends that we suspend the children fines for the summer of 2019. So I move, I make a motion to suspend children fines for the summer of 2019.
I second. That's kind of a pilot, right?
It was a pilot, yes.
Yep, I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
The, for the sexual harassment committee pol, uh, committee policy, the sexual harassment policy.
Oh, sorry, did you want to talk about the grace period?
So the grace period isn't really a policy, it's more like an ask for Tom to look into the ability to make it work, and then we can make a decision on moving.
Got it.
Because actually, we don't, it's a great idea, but if we can't do it, it's not great.
Right.
Okay. Um, I mean, sex, yes. Sexual harassment policy, I mean, I guess we can't vote on it until we see the actual document filled in with the information, so could that be another takeaway that you'd bring back to us in July?
For July.
Okay. And then the fund balance policy, um, I make a motion on behalf of the policy committee to have a quarterly reporting as to the percentage, does that make sense? Uh, current, of the quarterly percent, in, in the upcoming fiscal year, to have quarterly reporting as to the amount of the fund balance that represents the, the percentage that the fund balance represents of the budget.
The, the amount in the budget and then, sorry, the amount in the fund balance and then what, what the percentage of the fund balance is of the overall budget, right?
Yeah.
I mean, are you, would you folks consider sort of?
Are you jazzing it up?
Redrapping it, so it can be very clear.
All right. So we'll come back.
Yep.
With the more language and.
So do you want to not, we won't vote on it now.
That one, okay, okay. Yep, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, okay. So we.
Do you know what we voted on? Just two, right?
Just two.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. That's it. And then we'll take back, we'll meet around the legacy thing, move the will?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Legacy gifts was the ask, right?
Yes.
Um, I also have for uh, policy committees consideration, some changes relative to circulation.
Okay.
Usage, et cetera, some, I, I have them sitting on my desk, I can scan them.
Yeah.
And send them off to you three folks, you know, in the very near future.
Looking forward to it.
So did, did you take, was it, so the legacy one was the one you had asked about, right?
Yeah.
Would you say, okay.
Yeah.
I thought there was one more, though.
He had asked about fund balance.
No, the, the other policy that I think we were going to talk about, it may be in the context of the special projects report, is the um, idea that um, that the library board adopts a policy in tandem with consultation with the foundation about um, future capital projects that um, that the foundation is interested in undertaking. And the goal of this policy would be to create some sort of process that would allow for open um, collaboration, sharing of information um, early on in the process, so that um, all parties are familiar with an effort that in particular, the foundation is interested in moving forward with. that, in particular, the foundation is interested in moving forward with.
Do you want to, do you want to explain?
Yeah, I mean-
Just give some context.
Yeah, and again, and again, I'm going to emphasize, this isn't really about outcome or focus, as Tom states every meeting and in between meetings, there's, there is abundant gratitude toward the foundation and to the friends for all they do to support the library, to, to generate new initiatives and keep, keep, keep life here vibrant and moving forward. So, so that just goes, should go without saying, I'll say it clearly anyway, the, the idea is just that we, as a board, have a responsibility as outlined in our handbook, as outlined in our bylaws, that, that is above and beyond what I believe the foundation's responsibility is legally and, and, and my, my mind is just on the, on the process whereby new initiatives surrounding capital improvements are, are not only raised for discussion, but then how, how there is kind of a procedural protocol for how we go about actually enacting and supporting and everything else. And, you know, something like a joint committee that meets regularly, maybe it becomes part of the special projects committee. I think it also reflects on us as a board when there's, there are multiple avenues of communication that are not in line with each other. I don't, I feel like it's not as professional and, and, and responsible as it could be. So, so this is, you know, this is really just about procedure and protocol and not about, about what it is and, and not about the outcome. And I think we all love what's going on, it's just the manner in which it goes on that I think we just, we all need to be cognizant of going forward.
So Whitney, what are you, are you proposing anything?
I'm proposing that we-
Anything concrete?
That we discuss, no, I have no concrete proposal to vote on, I have nothing, it's just, it's, I want to explore finding a way to codify communication-
Okay.
-and make sure that we, right, and make sure that we, we are in line with that going forward.
So we should then have somebody, I mean, I hate to put policy on it again, but we should then have somebody look at that, one of the committees look at that and then come back to us. So it's really you guys, I mean, it can be, it's really, I think it's you, or, or maybe Deere and Chuck and I can do it as the executive committee. I don't really care, it's just somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I was already looking on their website for like bylaw, I was trying to find-
You guys, it's whatever you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I, and again, this is about communication, so I think as much communication as possible, so whatever we find, we should share, and I, you know, this is just about, I think, streamlining communication and enhancing it.
Okay.
And I think it's worth noting that the foundation is very much in favor of this, the policy that Whitney just articulated. They welcome the opportunity to have a collaborative dialogue for their initiatives going forward.
Interesting, Mr. Chairman, that, by coincidence, that in the board, as we just had a similar type of discussion, with the guys to how much to keep in the operating account for how long, and in this particular case, it decided to take a certain chunk of money and invest it, so that the monies are sitting there idle, but sort of interesting, grid mines thing alike.
Okay. Sounds good. So that matters being for the board.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, special committee handle.
I, I-
Oh, Tom does.
Um, I, I do want to indicate that the Memorial Highway Courtyard project that the foundation is spearheading is moving forward. At this point in time, they seem to have, we worked with, with the foundation as well, but there are two verbal commitments for grant monies from our state legislative team. Amy Pollan has, is promising or expects to be able to commit to $125,000 for the courtyard project, and Senator Stuart Cousins is also apparently committing $50,000 towards this project, so that's a significant amount of money as, as the foundation moves forward. They are also actively engaged in conversations with a landscape architect relative to preparing the way for creating a very tangible product that the board will have an opportunity to look at.
Thank you. Finance committee has a report, even though my finance committee members are not here. We, we have, we have a report and a recommendation. So in your, and it stuff deals with the discussion of the fund balance, so in your pack, there's like a paper clipped set of papers that says scenario one on the top of it. So the background is, should be in there, the background is that-
The cover, sorry, can you just show me?
Scenario one.
Okay. I, I don't have it.
I don't have that.
Only who? Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll explain it, so, the-
Do you want to share?
Click Dan and why don't you?
Sure. The director, Tom, had come to us with a request to potentially use some of the monies from the fund balance to address some one-time expenses. So in line with the discussion that we've talked about before, that you don't want to use the fund balance to fund ongoing operating expenses, because that's not sustainable and you'll spend it down, but appropriate usage does include one-time items. And the request that's been put forth sums to a total of $187,500, which includes $12,000 for office furniture that is Americans with Disabilities Act compatible and to help, you know, avoid on the job, you know, probably repetitive strain kind of injuries, $12,000, IT upgrade phase two, which includes continuing to invest in our IT infrastructure, Tom can certainly provide more details. The biggest item on the list, well, actually, no, two of the items are the same amount, but a replacement of the current, the library van, which I've been on the board for five years, when I, the first, one of the first discussions I had was that the van was like on its last legs. So, you know, that was five years ago, it hasn't gotten any younger in between now and then.
What, what do we use that for?
The library van is used by our, mostly by our custodial staff to ferry materials between both buildings. Also, they're using it if they have to make deliveries, if they have to go to City Hall. You know, it's, it's, doesn't have a lot of mileage, but the mileage it has on, because it's over 18 years old, is pretty heavy duty.
It's over 18 years old.
Yeah, it's, it's a GMC Savannah van. I mean, you've seen it, the big old maroon van, it's, and it's actually been malfunctioning for years, where we have spent a lot of money keeping it going and we're hoping that we can find a replacement and retire old paint, you know, put it's out of its misery.
That's, there's a $50,000 allowance for that, new carpeting on the second floor in the area that's being renovated, $34,500, and then $15,000 for the needs assessment consultant, which we've talked about before, and then $50,000 for the building audit, which we are obviously in the final throes of picking the vendor to actually do. And so that totals $187,500. Now, I'll get into kind of how that relates to the fund balance in a minute. The, the $50,000 for the library van replacement, if we approve something tonight, what we're, what the finance committee would like to ask Tom to do is to explore options for the van replacement, which they've already done a little bit of preliminary work on, but also explore options to not buy it outright in cash, but to finance it if perhaps, like, sometimes with new cars, it's 0% interest rate, right? You know, if there's a way, we can still fund it out of the fund balance, but if there's a way to spread the expense out over some reasonable period of years without, you know, undue interest costs, it's probably worth exploring, and then we can decide whether we want to do it or not.
What about the possibility of a lease? I mean-
I think I would look at both, I would look at, you know, I'd look at both options and see what you come up with.
What the long-term cost will be, right? Not just immediate.
Yeah, if you lease, you're not going to have any maintenance costs, basically, right? And, and I just don't know what's involved with leasing for a commercial, I'm sure it's probably not on the-
Insurance is probably higher.
Insurance is probably higher, and I don't know, it's more complicated for, because it's not like a commercial, but, but yeah, I think there's a little of both.
And also perhaps if the city has anything that they can op- I don't know if they have a fleet or something, I don't know. Yeah, yeah.
Well, Tom said there's a buying program that like, if we decide what we want to buy, you put it in some system and all the, all car dealers can bid, basically bid on it.
Right, it's a, the Board of Education uses a process that's set up by the state of New York, where we choose X vehicle with Y qualities, and as Chuck said, car dealerships throughout the state will competitively bid, bid on, on what we think that we need and we end up with the best price. And I know the Board of Education, I don't know about the city, I know the Board of Education has been very successful. I think the city has access to buying programs and actually, I tried to attach our library to it.
Yeah, that's what I, and they wouldn't-
They, well, I think the city was willing, but I think the contracts didn't allow for us to be part of that, could I tell you?
Is there an opportunity to donate our old van and get a tax, any tax relief?
We don't pay taxes.
Oh, we don't pay taxes, so we don't get tax relief because-
No, because I asked, we were talking about like a hybrid vehicle, you know, you get taxes, but we don't get taxes.
But, you know, being the owner of a hybrid vehicle myself, I like the idea of looking at hybrid or electric vehicles. Actually, we've been in conversation with a county agency about working with an electric vehicle, because, you know, it could be very appealing in terms of, you know, the green aspect, as well as lower maintenance and the fuel cost is, I mean, we pay a considerable amount of money year to year, never mind insurance, just on fuel, et cetera.
Yes, I think all these things, as you explore it.
Is this scenario one?
So that's, so that's, so all the scenarios are the same in terms of the expenditure, but basically what we did with these scenarios is look at them relative to the fund balance as it is today, and what it would do with the fund balance in terms of the percentage of the budget.
The same.
So in scenario one, you, you can see with the current fund balance, it would take us to 12.61 percent, so after spending, that's, so we would be at the bottom end of the potentially recommended range, assuming we adopt that policy.
We're already out of whack. They just presented and we're already out of whack.
It was taken into account.
Just did that.
The, the second scenario, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, it looks like there will be, you know, subject to confirmation, potentially an additional, as you can see on here, $187,500 that will be added to the fund balance, because monies that will be hopefully unspent from last year's budget.
I'm sorry, $100,000.
$187,500.
That's the total amount.
I'm sorry.
Negative accounts to date, the one for flat.
Sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading the amount for the expenditure. So yeah, $100,000, sorry, that would get added on top of the current fund balance. And then you can see, we would be at 14, after, if we spent the $187,500, we'd be 14.33 percent of the budget, which would be kind of in the middle of the recommended range. So what the finance committee recommends is that we move forward, when will we know that, when will we be able to fir- I think what we, I think the finance committee is struggling with is, assuming we confirm up the $100,000, once we get comfortable that that's happening, that we, the committee approves, you know, moving forward on these expenditures.
That won't be until October?
I don't know if we need, maybe we should consider that, maybe, or perhaps we can gate, we can authorize some of this.
Could you put some above the line and some below the line and hold on, or prioritize them and see what could wait till October?
We'll have a, we'll have a better, like, by the end of July, the board will have an idea.
Okay.
Unofficial, but, but a, but a, but a pretty good idea based on Jean's analysis of previous fiscal years.
Yeah. So maybe, why don't, so, so look, the finance committee, I'm starting to think if there's anything we can vote on tonight, I think the, the finance committee wants to recommend going forward with this, assuming the $100,000 gets added to the fund balance from unspent monies of last year. And so maybe what we do as a follow-up is, I guess, number one, are there any questions or points people want to raise?
So with respect to like the building audit needs assessment, are those checks that are written one-shot or are they sort of broken up over, over a period of time?
They're, I think typically the fee structure is it's broken up over a period of time, you know, in terms of performance, et cetera.
But not, the, the time span is not huge, though, because in either case. And the building audit is an estimate, it's an allocation, and the estimates that we got in came in, I believe-
A little bit higher.
Uh, slightly under, actually, but, but without some added-
Addals.
Addals that we may want to consider and, and will, I think, in the next few weeks, too.
Just trying to figure out, when do we, when do you spend the one, so the total's $187,500 and we won't have a cent till October, November, like, how do the, the payments sort of line up? I don't know, are we going to be spending before we have confirmation, or if, like, if we vote now, can we, like, check in? I don't know, I'm just trying to understand.
It's also possible we could decide on scenario one, but end up with the result of scenario two anyway, right?
I think that's right, I think it doesn't really matter.
Right. I think if, if we're okay with still being within the 12 percent range-
That's the worst case, right? With the best case being the 14 percent.
Right, unless there's a way to prioritize these.
Well, why don't, what if we, what if we, because it's going to take you some time to do some research on the van.
Absolutely.
$50,000.
Yeah.
What if we, what if we put something forth to approve, we strip out the $50,000 for the van, we, we look at that as subsequent, meaning when we firm up the $100,000.
And, and the carpet's going to, you know, we can't work on replacing carpet until we have, in my mind, until we have formal confirmation that we will be getting the, the $140,000 grant. So I wouldn't think that we'd be using that money until the, to the fall. I would-
So why don't we, what if we approve, what if we approve $100,000 of this today? We'll put forth that, and then we can come as subsequent, you know, and you can do what you want within the-
Right. I, I would, I would like to see the IT upgrade with the firewalls and the other protection against hacking really in place as soon as possible.
So if you take out-
So, so what will you do with the $100,000? I'd like to, I'd like to know what we're working on.
It's the ADA furniture, the IT upgrade, needs assessment and building audit about to $103,000.
Okay, okay, maybe that's what we-
That's what I would do.
And the 34.5 and the 50 is the 84.5 that we can-
Can wait.
Hope is the second phase of this fund balance expenditure.
And the building audit is very well be a little bit more than this number here, so.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know how much more.
Right.
Make a motion, maybe.
So I'll make a motion to approve usage of the fund balance to fund $12,000 of staff ADA furniture, $26,000 IT upgrade phase two, $15,000 needs assessment, $50,000 building audit. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if, as Sarah, I'm sorry.
Just checking.
As Sarah observed, if in fact the building audit is higher, because we choose to, you know, go further than the core grant, we can come back to you and say it's going to be 58,000. And so will you give us permission for that additional amount?
Right.
No.
And I would, I would also just, I would also, I would also just put into everybody's awareness that pending the outcome of the building audit, we may be talking a lot more about other money that needs to, right?
That's another matter.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe we're like, who needs a van? We need a whole new plumbing, you know, whatever they discover that, you know, might-
Roof entrance.
Right, right, that might be more, so just-
Yep.
Put in that B in your bonnet.
Your B in your bonnet?
I've not heard that before.
I know.
Do we have any other items of business? Are there any public to be heard tonight?
Do we have a list? Yes.
Dorothy Oliver?
Good afternoon, or good evening, my name is Dorothy Oliver, I live at 162 Clinton Avenue here in New Shell. And we were wondering if the board has been aware or heard information about the pending buildings that are going up here in this area of Lawton Street where the bank was, but the building is still here, Chase Bank. There's talk about building a 23-story building on top of that, and then there's another 48-story building that's being, that has been contemplated. Now, we don't know how concrete this is, but we know that the builder or the developer is from San Francisco, I think the name is what, Sansom, Sansom Pacific Properties. And they're talking about building, you know, taking up, which is going to take up the parking lot here, and you know that's going to end up, this building, in more ways than ones, in terms of the parking lot, in terms of the parking spaces, and also the lighting spaces. So I'm just saying, if you aren't, I would suggest that you, you know, you look into it, because it hasn't happened, but let me tell you, it's real.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Monique Evelard?
Good evening, all. I just have a question about the needs assessment. I know that Corey Gallagher's term is ending, and do you know who is going to replace him? And if that person will be picking up where he's left off in terms of the direction he was going with it?
We haven't re-done the committee.
Right.
So I don't-
No, we don't, we don't-
You don't really know?
We talked about that tonight, yeah, we don't know.
Okay.
I mean, all of his committees have to be reassigned, not just that one, so we, we just don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie Sacks?
So I guess Corey left, yeah?
Deliberately.
Oh, okay. And is he going to be here next month? No? Okay.
I think so.
So I want to just officially thank him, even in absentia, for all the work that he did. We especially appreciate the research that he did and how open-minded he was to really finding out how important, he did the research and then did a presentation, which I wasn't here for, but I watched, I've watched a couple of times, actually, on the video, and just the importance of this being a standalone building and that the building itself is, helps, being standalone helps it, the values, all the real estate values around here. helps it, the values, all the real estate values around here. So I really appreciate his contribution to the board and I hope he does stay involved in this. I also, um, in terms, you may have thought about this in terms of the elevator situation, but I have a history, a 20-year history in conflict resolution, and one thing I might suggest to you, if you haven't thought about this, is to write up the pain and suffering that was caused by this and to approach the vendor, to tell them that you're not going to be going, you know, taking them to court, but that you would like to give them the opportunity to make good on this. And it's, maybe it's something that you've done, maybe it's something you've thought about, but maybe they would extend the warranty if the warranty is from the company. And they might also be able to make a donation to the library, just an idea. I also want to emphasize what Ms. Oliver said, that, that we are hearing that there is, there are big buildings that are probably going to be coming. And, you know, we've been telling, we've been asking you to, to look into this and not just be concerned about the parking. And this is, this is really potentially happening and it's going to really impact the library. And you may have an opportunity to really weigh in on this and to try to influence the city and to try to influence the developers to, to protect the library as opposed to detract from the library. This is an opportunity for the board to really take action on this and be proactive and not just wait to hear. Again, this isn't RXR, so now this is another developer. We think that they may have bought many properties right around here, so I really, really encourage you to not wait another day. You know, you're dealing with a lot of things, but this is hugely important and I just don't think you should let this one go and look back at some point and, and kick yourselves for, for not looking into this. So I strongly advise you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.